Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
We're going to attempt to appropriately abbreviate this presentation, but just give you the adjustments where.
Great, okay. Item seventeen, first quarter financial report and the resolution for the budget adjustments.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. Christine Alfaro, Director of Administrative Services. So as the City Manager pointed out, in the interest of everybody and time, we've decided to shorten our presentation because all of the information in the first portion of our slides is really covered in our current staff report. So with that, I will hand it over to Zach Korach, the City's Finance Manager, who's going to quickly go through all of the recommended budget adjustments as part of the first quarter.
Okay, thank you. So this slide before you, we have a comprehensive look at the total adjustments or recommended adjustments at the bottom, $732,000. Just to the right, we look at the requested increase in estimated revenues of $237,000, and that would result in a usage of fund balance of $495,000. So now we'll go into the individual departments. We start with the Administration Department, and more specifically, the City Manager's Office is requesting a conversion of the Emergency Services Coordinator position from a limited term to a full-time or a permanent term. This position is being requested to continue preparing the city in the event of a disaster and emergency, and is considered to be an ongoing cost. City Attorney's Office is requesting an additional $458,000 for legal costs associated with Lehigh and Stevens Creek quarries, as well as some minor additional increases pertaining to Law Enforcement Department, in fiscal year 1819, the city entered into a donation agreement with Apple for additional sheriff services at Apple Campus Two or Apple Park, and that was budgeted for a period of nine months. And that was, the initial term began in September of 2018, I believe it was. And in fiscal year 1920, that same nine-month portion was budgeted as well. What this adjustment is proposing is to record the full 12 months of the Apple donation to fully offset the costs that the city has budgeted and will be incurring for those additional sheriff services. Next, we have Parks and Recreation Department, a total of $4,600. This is for contingency for neighborhood events and youth and teen programs. What had happened with this particular item is during the 1920 budget process, there was, the department had requested a separation or to break out three programs, or these two specific programs, from the senior program for operational efficiencies, as well as reporting efficiencies. And as a result, the contingency was left out of the fiscal year 1920 budget for these two particular programs. Approving this request would basically reinstate the contingency that would normally be part of that budget. Community Development Department is requesting a total of $76,000, first related to Community Development Block Grant. This is an additional allocation that is determined and allocated by HUD, the Housing and Urban Development, and related to an annual formula that is provided to participating agencies. Next is ERGO evaluations and equipment. During fiscal year 1920, there were two planners that were hired, and because they were hired during the current fiscal year, those budget items were not included in the adopted budget. Hearing officer.
So this is furnitures for the two planners?
No, this would be ergonomic evaluations. So when the city hires new employees, there's an ergonomic evaluation to ensure that they have all the accommodations necessary for their working space.
So it's just evaluations, not equipment? Also chairs, desk?
It would, yes.
So $3,000 is not just evaluation, right?
It is not just the evaluation. It would be for equipment, yes. If we're, if, depending on the results of the evaluation, there could be a recommendation to have a new chair, desk, yes. Next, there's a request for a hearing officer, $1,200. This is a contract amendment with a contractor data ticket used for administration citation hearings. The $1,200 is really derived from just a few hours of contract services that is estimated for the remainder of the fiscal year. Next, we have building code books, an amount of $8,000. The city currently budgets this item every three years. When the new codes go into effect, they're going to be going into effect in January of 2020, and is part of the zero-based budget exercise in fiscal year 1920. Because again, this particular item is budgeted every three years, it appears that it was Planning applications, this is the last one from Community Development, $52,000 is being requested to hire an outside contractor to assist in reviewing applications for Cupertino Village, as well as Westport. And lastly, the Public Works Department is requesting a total of $162,000, first being for part-time staffing.
I'm sorry, can you back up one slide?
Sure.
So the last allocation, are those all pass-through dollars, or?
Those will be pass-through dollars.
Okay, alright, thanks. So can you just identify the pass-through dollars as you go along?
Of course.
Okay, great, thanks.
So part-time staffing in the Development Services Division, this actually will be partially offset with cost recovery dollars. During fiscal year 1920, staff have experienced a significant increase in small cell permit applications that have been received. And so in order to observe that, absorb that workload, additional part-time staffing is being requested. And as I mentioned before, it will be partially offset by the fees collected for each of those applications that are received, approximately $1,500 per application. The aquarium at the Cupertino Library, the filtration and lighting system is requiring upgrades in the amount of $53,000. There was a technical condition assessment that was performed on the aquarium, and staff are estimating approximately $2,000 in energy savings as a result of those upgrades to be performed. Next, we have veteran memorial light replacements, an amount of approximately $10,000. In recent months, these lights have been failing more often and requiring additional repairs, and most significantly, I think they've been, I believe they've been experiencing water damage, which is causing a need to actually replace the fixtures themselves. Blackberry Farm fencing, in the amount of $17,000. On the West Hill side of Blackberry Farm picnic area, there has been, it has experienced a number of landslides in recent history, and as a result, in terms of a safety, health and safety response to those events, staff are recommending a split rail fencing be installed, similar to other fences that have been installed within the Stevens Creek corridor. Last but not least, we have the annual sidewalk inspection in an amount of $30,000. This will be in a four-year-long inspection program that will be obviously inspecting, inventoring, and identifying repairs within the City of Cupertino sidewalk infrastructure.
So did we not do this before, or why wasn't this in the budget originally?
For all of these items, this is first quarter, how come we didn't anticipate this?
Yeah, we start from the top?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, so for the part-time staffing, I mean, we currently do have a staff person there now. That time and the dollars that were budgeted are going to be expiring, and as Zach mentioned, we just have an increase in not only the number of certain types of permit applications, but just the complexity of the applications is also increased. So we're just wanting to continue with that staffing for the rest of the year. You know, the aquarium filtration system, that's something that goes back to when the library was built, so, you know, all equipment has a useful life, and it's just running the end of it.
Then this, why did this come up in first quarter budget adjustment? How come this wasn't in our annual budget? This should be expected, right?
Well, I mean, the issues with the small cell towers and receiving 36 applications for that was something that wasn't completely expected.
Yeah, that I understand, but.
Well, the aquarium.
Did the current offset and fail?
Well, that's right. No, that's right. I mean, that's how those things, you know, work or don't work, and that is a sensitive environment.
Oh, so this is not, because it was, so it's about 10 years, so do we expect?
Well, it's about 15 years old, yes. I mean, that's complicated equipment, it's used 24/7. It's been maintained well. I think we've got a pretty good lifespan out of it for the aquarium. The light replacements at the Memorial Park, we, the existing lights that were there, we did have water intrusion, we just no longer could get replacement parts for them. We were successfully able to find LED replacements that could go inside the existing canisters that are at grade, so I think that saved quite a bit of expense because we didn't need to do a lot of saw cutting and removal, so I think that will, I foresee with LED lighting that that's going to be a good fix going out in the future. The farm fencing, I don't know if you're familiar with that area, but there's a pretty good-sized bluff there on the west side of the park, there behind the horseshoe pit. We've been working with a property owner, Shurup, around top to stabilize their embankment from going, you know, sloughing off into our park. And what this fence does is it keeps people from walking near the toe of that bluff that would further aggravate that erosion occurring.
The question is not really exactly why is this necessary, but why now? Because this, it has been sliding for years. This is not a problem that occurs just this past three months, right?
Well, that's true, but the actions that the property owners are taking.
And the sidewalk, annual sidewalk inspection also, we, this is something we are doing regularly, or it's something new we are starting?
Yeah, this is something new, and it's more proactive. In years past, we, it was, it really paralleled our asphalt improvement program, to whenever we would go out and do our, you know, pave our streets or slurry our streets, we would do the wholesale inspection of our curb gutter and sidewalk. We've done so much of our city, we've covered a lot of it, but we don't have a proactive sidewalk inspection program that goes out and inspects the area in quadrants. This would be a four-year program.
I understand, but why we didn't do this three months earlier, when we did the annual budget?
She wants to know why it wasn't part of the zero base.
Yeah, the, this went through our, through risk management and how the actual written program was going to be crafted, it just hadn't been settled out at that time of the year. And so we think it's a good thing to do. That's all been settled out, that's why we're asking for it now.
Okay, just.
And the last couple of slides that we have are just reiterating, emphasizing the staffing requests, reminding the City Council that full-time staff count is currently at 198.75, and the two staffing requests that have been brought this evening, again, an Emergency Services Coordinator conversion from limited term to permanent, as well as the part-time staffing within Development Services Division and Public Works. So we have the recommendations included before you, and as always, we like to remind the City Council, the next time that we'll be bringing a budget-related item before you will be at mid-year during the month of February, March of 2020, and then finally, again, third quarter report will be coming in the month of May of 2020.
Okay, I'd like to ask Roger one question. What would be the downside of putting the sidewalk repair into the next budget instead of doing this adjustment now?
We, I mean, we would just have a program like we've had in the past, which has been good, it just won't be as proactive as we know it could be.
No, I mean, I'm saying, put it in proactively, but do it when we do our budgeting, not in the middle of the year.
Yes.
I mean, I think the proactive program's, you know, probably a good idea, but I'm just wary of all these expenses coming forward in the middle of the year, when they should have been in the initial budget. I mean, I know you weren't Public Works Director back then, probably, so.
Well, it's a very good program, and while, you know, we have a good track record of not having a lot of claims on this, the whole purpose is to avoid claims.
Okay, so yeah, that's a good reason, okay.
That's the whole purpose of it.
So thank you for that.
Okay.
So if it will help us reduce our insurance costs or our claim payouts, that's a worthwhile thing.
And I should mention that through, I don't know if it's A-BAG or York, what the right term is, but I mean, we'll be seeking reimbursement for this program through them as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the detail on that. I'll try and be just very quick, using my normal thinking. So you've just gone through these items, some of them are pass-through, some of them are cost recovery. Assume that everything stays in, we don't take out the sidewalk issue. What is the net amount needed to be funded through a budget adjustment? The net, take out the cost recovery, take out the pass-through, what's left?
So on the slide before you, if we look at all of the requested expenditure items, $732,000. We factor in the additional estimated revenues related to the Apple donation, that would have a net effect or a fund balance, fund balance usage of $495,000. Again, that would be conservative, in the sense that there are some cost recovery opportunities that are not part of the budget because of their degree of uncertainty.
Okay.
A good example would be the reimbursement program for the annual sidewalk inspection.
Okay, so then, the next question, when we did the budget, what was the amount that then wound up going into the reserves for the year? I mean, assuming the revenues minus our budget was a positive that went into the reserves.
At which point in time?
When we did the budget.
So as of June 30, 2019.
Yep.
The city ended, the ending fund balance, or particularly for the general fund, had a surplus of approximately $6 million. Thank you. Okay, so here's a look at the general fund fund balance analysis at various points in times. We're looking at, in the first column, the actuals from fiscal year 2017, 18, total fund balance, $52.5 million. And again, the number that we like to draw attention to is the unassigned amount, that is the amount that we commonly refer to as being free and clear. Next column, year-end projection, as of June 30, 2018, 19. We call this a year-end projection because these numbers have yet to officially be audited completely, but with a relatively high degree of certainty, we're confident that that $58.4 million is going to be accurate. And then we look at the adopted budget, as of 2019, or for fiscal year 2019, 20, estimated a ending fund balance of $46.6 million. And then we see a first-quarter projection, projecting out the fiscal year end at 63.21. And so the question that really comes to mind here would be, okay, what is, what's really driving that delta between the 46 million and the 63 million? A lot of that has to do with, with, well, we can go to the other slides, but when we're comparing the budgeted figures with the actual figures, and we look at the actual performance of the City's general fund, the, I am gonna, I am gonna bounce around and try to find the correct slide, because it's a.
Could you first explain a little bit, what's assigned, unassigned, committed? For example, the Lawrence Meade Park, that 8 million, is that, that's not included here?
It is not.
That's the capital reserve?
That's in a separate, a separate fund, that would be in the park dedication fund.
So that's separate?
But that would be restricted, yes.
Like the $5 million for, already allocated for the library earlier, is that part of this, or that's also the capital separate?
That is also separate from the general fund, that would be part of the capital reserve. So when we're looking at.
Then what's the difference between assigned committed and unassigned?
Sure, so, so within the committed classification, we have items like economic uncertainty, there's $19 million that Council had set aside for any unforeseen circumstances that would, that would take place. A good thing would be a downturn in the economy. Building healthy reserves, and in this case, a $19 million balance would be able to absorb those downturns. Within the restricted category, we would be looking at, well, yes, restricted by law, but the specific classifications or components within that classification would be the money set aside in the pension, the Section 115 trust, so approximately $8 million would be a component of that. Anything that we see in the assigned classification would be related to encumbrances, any outstanding contracts that the city has pending, that would be represented in the assigned. Non-spendable usually represents any loan receivable balances, or if there are any prepaid items that the city has made, that would be offset with those components in fund balance. And so if there's anything that doesn't have either an internal or an external earmark, so to speak, then it would be classified as unassigned, and that would represent a dollar amount that would be available for City Council discretion to use how they saw fit.
So I think this is the slide of where I'm trying to get to. So on the one hand, you could explain it, but if I ask it my way, then perhaps, is there an echo? So the budget, when we did it, was $149 million, and we're now thinking it's looking like it's going to be $130? And then the revenue that was coming in, we originally thought it was going to be $138, and now we're thinking the revenue is going to be higher in $143? Is my understanding that?
I think I understand your question now. The slide before you is actually for fiscal year 2018, 19, so last fiscal year. And I'll talk just real briefly about this to address the question about that large increase in fund balance from one year to the next. That is primarily due to, if we look at the budget components of this table, the 1819 budget had appropriations or expenditures of $149 million in comparison with actuals of $130. So there was actually an expenditure or appropriation savings of approximately $19 million that came under budget. When we look at the revenue column, $138 was estimated or part of the budget, but in actuality, $143.6 had come in. So when you take both the revenues and expenditures savings together, that's where we come up with a more revised or accurate projection as to where we're going to end 1920. To answer your question specifically, I don't, do you recall if we have a slide showing, I believe what Councilmember Willie is looking for, is what is really the total amended budget as of September 30, 2019? And here it is.
Pretty, well, I like the other slide, so if I could just talk to it, so we don't kind of get buried in those numbers. So this was 1819, but if we assume that this also represents 1920, and then we say, gee whiz, we originally thought the budget was going to be $149, at the end of the year it came in under, we thought our revenues were $138, they came in higher. If we were to say, gee whiz, 1920 is going to have this same composition, okay, so now switch over to those other slides essentially, and that we now are finding ourselves midway through the years, we're under-budgeted by half a million. So if we would have thrown that extra, you know, the sidewalk improvements and everything, if we had thrown that in at the beginning of the year, like Mayor Scharf has said, you know, do it at the budget time, instead of $149, it would have been $149.5, actual would then be $130.5. So anyway, where I'm kind of just going with this is that, as much as I'd really like the budget to be done once a year, and then the really unforeseen items being adjustments, if this is reflective of what it is for 19 and 20, yeah, I'm okay that we take care of this budget adjustment for a half million. If, on the other hand, the budget was the $130, and then the actual was $149, and then we're talking about putting another .5 on top of it, and the revenues were reversed, you know, we expected $143 is coming in at $138, then I think, you know, I'd really kind of be, you know, hitting myself on the side of the head. But if you understand where I'm coming from, going forward, you know, I think for this year, I'm okay thinking that last year is representative for this year, let's take care of this half million dollars and not get too bent out of shape. Going forward, I agree with Mayor Scharf, let's try and capture, if we can, a little bit better, all the expenses, put them in the budget, because that's when we really decide, how much money do we really feel we have a right to spend of our residents' taxes, and deciding whether or not we are going to do these extra projects like the ponds at Memorial Park and stuff. I think it's, this is kind of showing, we're in a good situation. So we're in a good situation, yeah, let's go ahead and move on, take care of it, and hopefully, in the future, we're a little bit more fiscally thoughtful at the beginning of the budget. And that's just my thinking, maybe not everybody's.
To me, this is probably a very typical pattern with an organization that's just gone through a zero base, that there's an adjustment period.
I expected an adjustment period, I just, the ones that could have been anticipated, or if they really weren't anticipated, gosh darn it, we forgot to do the sidewalks, just like you were, you know, doing your budget at home, sit there and say, okay, well, we're going to wait until, you know, next month, and then we'll take care of it, as opposed to, you know, just kind of, well, we're doing adjustments, let's throw it in.
Well, and I think the reason we got into this position of having all these unfunded capital improvements is, like, if you, if you're in a homeowners association for a condominium, you're putting away capital reserves every year for new roofs or new driveways, even though you know it's got a 25-year lifespan, you have to put that money away every year. The state almost requires it, they want to see your capital reserve budget. But it sounds like here, even for something like an aquarium, maybe we should have been saying, oh, we know after 15 years, this is going to require complete replacement, we should have been putting money away all along for that. And by the way, I don't think there's any plans to replace the ponds in Memorial Park.
No, but we got to redo Memorial Park. I'm just using that as the descriptor. So for this, I would say, if you could send me these two slides, because, you know, that's what I'm going to hang on to for next year, you know, when we're talking the budget.
So a question about this slide, the expenditure is less than what we had budgeted, right? So the $19 million is because of, we budgeted something, but that project was canceled?
A lot of it is related to carryovers and encumbrances. So when a fiscal year closes out, if there are any appropriations that have yet to be expended, that have been authorized by Council, of course, but are planned to be spent in the subsequent year, they will be transferred from that fiscal year to the subsequent.
So it's not like we saved, it's just we didn't expense it this year? It's, okay.
More likely than not, there's always. More likely than not, there's always, um, there is a, a review, that process is vetted, where all the carryover requests come into the budget team, and the budget team will review those to determine if, if that particular budget item is necessary, or if it is reasonable to actually take place in that subsequent year.
Okay, can you put-
So, you, while we're on that, then, like I say, send me these two slides, but then, when we do the budget next year, if you could provide that, um, additional slide saying, okay, this is what was actually on paper, but we carried over because it had not been incurred yet, this extra amount, because otherwise, I look at this at face value, and I think, wow, we saved, uh, you know, nineteen million, and we made five million dollars more, but you're saying that's not, not correct. So that additional slide that simply says, the, uh, carryover, the delta was this, and the, I don't know that the revenue could actually be, uh, different, but maybe there is some reason, so that would be helpful. I'm getting smarter.
Okay, can you, uh, bring up the slide with the city manager and city attorney? I think-
Right, the four fifty-eight.
Yeah, I think that's the major part. So, but first, city manager, I think, so this one is increased due to emergency preparedness. Um, but I think we also, the economic development manager has, uh, transferred into a contracting role. So, do we have any budget adjustment for that, or are we expecting to pay the same amount or more?
Right now, I estimate that to be a push, 'cause I think that's kind of a sh- right now, I haven't done enough analysis to be able to tell you if this, the way it is, is gonna work for the city, if we need it at all, if we need a full, a part-time person back. I don't think so, I think the situation for right now is okay.
So right now, we are not paying a part-time person, but we are paying for contract, so how much is a contract?
But very much part-time.
How much are we paying for, like, how, how is that contract structured?
So that's actually a net wash, when we look at the savings we anticipated through the end of the fiscal year from having that vacancy and that part-time economic development manager, and we look at the cost of contracting out, um, those costs practically wash out from each other, and there may be a four thousand dollar savings, um, net at the end of the day, but not anything significant to be able to cover the additional thirty that's being requested.
I guess as con- contract service, are we paying more per hour than, I suppose we are paying more per hour than an employee, right?
So there's, yeah, there's certain packages that they're including, so like an economic update, and then there's specific projects that they're working on, so it's not necessarily on an hourly basis, but the contract is set up on specific projects that need to be completed.
Mm-hmm, so we don't need budget adjustment for that?
No, that, that will be, like I said, that'll be a wash.
Okay.
At least in the current year, when we get to proposed budget, and I think Deb gets to reevaluate that position, you may see something different come before you.
Hmm, so I think most of the budget adjustment comes from this item, the Lehigh, um, Stevens Creek cur- quarry. So, four hundred thirteen thousand, this is, uh, estimated exp- expense going forward, not what we have spent on, right?
That's, that's correct. So we've, we, the ci- the city manager's office, with the assistance of the city attorney, has been tracking significant activity at, at Lehigh Quarry and Stevens Creek Quarry, and commenting on it to the county. And so, in the, in the past, we've advised regarding truck traffic, the increased truck traffic which is occurring, which the county did, um, cease. We also advised on an initial reclamation plan amendment that was submitted by Lehigh Quarry that was eventually withdrawn, but since then, there have been, um, additional applications that have been submitted. So at Lehigh, there's a reclamation plan amendment application. We also have at Stevens Creek Quarry, a use permit and another reclamation plan amendment application coming in, and so, um, this is our office's very conservative estimate, that if the council wants to authorize us to continue to, um, monitor, comment on, um, those applications all the way through the pre-application process, um, commenting on the draft DEI environmental review, um, documents on the final EIR, um, and this is our estimate of what it would take to do that in a strong way, that would really, you know, protect, um, Cupertino's interests and the residents' interest in traffic and air quality and water quality. So this is not just attorney time, it's also hiring, um, subject matter experts, um, so we would hire some, an expert in slope stability, traffic expert, air quality expert, water quality expert, noise expert, who can help review and comment on these documents and check the work that's being done by the county, identify where additional mitigation measures are, could occur, where additional project alternatives might be available, um, and to help, um, really address potential impacts and oppose these applications as they go forward, so.
So, you mentioned a lot of plans that the city has commented on. Just to clarify, this does not include those?
That's right, this is forward-looking, yes.
Those we have paid for, that's already included in your, the city attorney's annual contract?
Yes, so we budgeted for that at the beginning there.
So this is, uh, you, in, anticipate, in addition to the annual contract, we need the services. So did we talk about whether we want to continue to go in deep on this or not?
How much is the city attorney's annual contract?
Um, I think it's just over a million, one point two-
So this first quarter adjustment represents a roughly forty percent increase in that annual budget?
Uh, two point one million.
Oh, sorry, thanks.
Well, that's, that's including, that's including all outside, but, you know, just in terms of-
Correct, right.
Anyway, I mean, it's a pretty significant number, I mean-
Well, and that's, and that's why we are coming to you, to say that if, I mean, I'm, I am, we wanted to come to you to say, if you wanna keep fighting the Lehigh Quarry and Stevens Creek Quarry applications, and really going in in a strong way, to say, you know, we want the city attorney's office to provide the lead here, I will say the county's been very responsive to our efforts so far, um, that if, if we're gonna keep doing that whole hog and go in strong, that it, I'm not saying it will cost this much, it, it might cost this much, um-
I would like to know what our expected outcome for going strong, if we are going strong, great, but it's not going to get us anywhere, then what's the difference, whether it's going strong or not? And another thing is someone else commented, uh, on a letter the city wrote, which was a really good letter, we spent a lot of time on that, but, uh, Kristen said, the county was going to do the same thing, the city should have waited for the coun- county to do the work, and then we add on top. So I'm just wondering, are we, again, trying to do something the county would be doing anyway?
I don't think the county's willing to do this.
I, I, in my assessment, the city's been providing the lead, and the county has been appreciative of the, the, um, legal analysis that we've been providing. Now, I, I, and I, like I, but, again, this is, uh, the city attorney's asking for council priorities here, and if you wanna continue funding this work, it's not a, a, you know, necessarily something that we're saying we need to do. It's just that if, we're trying to check in with you to see if you wanna-
So I think we, I'd like to know what outcome we are expecting.
Right, sorry, so to-
Can we discuss that now?
Sure, can I fall back for just a minute? Um, as a reminder, council asked us to take a look at what it would take to increase our efforts in this area, and provide a line item estimate, which I provided right after the, was it a close, special session on the topic? In any case, we provided, uh, I provided that to council, separate email, so you have the breakout in your email somewhere. Um, and this was as a result of the request by council for us to look at how much it would cost to go all the way in.
Yeah, so the, so the, um, what we're looking for is first to make sure that environmental review on these applications are, are conducted appropriately, um, and, um, and so it would, we would be providing comments about, um, additional alternatives that could be considered by the county. We would be trying to identify, um, mitigation measures that could be enacted to reduce impacts, for instance, reduce the truck traffic, um, reduce air quality impacts, um, make sure that the ridge lines are protected, so that we don't have a lot of development, you know, up along the ridge lines. Those are all comments that can be made, supported by evidence that shows that there are impacts that must be reduced under CEQA. Um, it's, we're also tracking, you know, so at the pre-application level, we're trying to make sure that they're doing the correct steps for environmental review, and not trying to get around doing environmental review, and then once they do do environmental review, make sure that we identify, um, all the significant impacts, as well as adequate mitigation measures or project alternatives to reduce the impacts of these, um, projects. And, uh, and if we're successful, we'll, we'll be able to, um, avoid impacts. Uh, there's, some of the work that's being done is, is vested, you know, opening this, the second pit, we're, we're not gonna be able to stop that, but there is a, a discretionary use permit associated with Stevens Creek Quarry, which is a discretionary action, and so I think, you know, the council can be determining its goals as it goes along, but you might be able to give it to the county to deny that use permit based on the impacts that we identify through environmental review, um, or if they grant it to reduce the impacts associated with that activity. Um, if, ultimately, if the project is approved, um, and you go to litigation, your, um, any parties that do litigate would only be able to sue on comments that were made during the environmental review process, so this is, um, also would be laying the basis to say, um, look, y- there's a problem here, and the project never should've been approved, and, and we're gonna litigate to enforce that if it comes to that. But if you haven't been involved in the environmental review process, and you haven't identified those problems, then those issues are, are, it's too late at that point. So, um, again, it's, it's up to the council if this is, um, an issue you wanna continue to engage in. I, again, this is a very conservative number, it might well be half that. I, we don't know what the documents look like yet, but if, this is saying that if, if there's full EIRs on both these applications, that, that we wanna hire experts in these areas that we think are of concern to the city, that, that this is what it's gonna cost. And if you would like to reduce that number, then, you know, we can priori- we can identi- we can prioritize, we could say, well, maybe we don't need a noise expert, you know, and, and we'll just rely on, you know, some of our, our own assessments at the city attorney's office, and, um, so there is ways to cut costs here, but, um, this is our, just based on our experience, fighting envi- large EIRs for very complicated projects like this, what it, what it might take.
So the run rate right now is, uh, essentially a million dollars a year for the activity that we need to be doing against Lehigh?
Um, this is a special project, we don't have any ongoing costs associated with, with monitoring Lehigh.
Right, this is not something we are, we're already doing, this is-
Right.
This is a new request in order to do more.
But the, but the activities that you had to have, or that we requested you to have done, um, for the last six months, which included like that letter that shut down the truck, truck traffic and stuff, I'm thinking that all that has already been, you know, paid, um, incurred, and thinking that it's probably about the same amount-
Oh, no, much less.
Much less, so-
Yeah.
So for the first half of the year, or the first-
Yeah, I, I, I could go back and look at our-
Just, you know, just roughly, so-
Um, I, I would say fifty thousand dollars.
Oh, okay, wow.
Less, maybe?
Okay, wow, so that's great. And so it's just that there's gonna be this large occurrence now, because of the second pit and their expanded activities that they're trying to push.
As well as the Stevens Creek use permit application and additional expansion there, yeah.
And that's why I'm saying the, the activities that they're trying to push in the bigger scale.
You're basically fighting on two fronts here.
Yeah. And do you think then, the, those battles are gonna be done within the six months, or at the next budget, we're gonna say, well, we-
Um, yeah, this is not just for six months, this would be through the entire environmental review process for these projects, which would likely take a year at least, I think.
So, my comment would be, you know, I think we need to do this, we know that, you know, maybe one last question. I mean, I think, uh, ROTA, uh, frequently shows all the violations and the fines that they've been incurring and stuff, and I'm thinking, essentially, all that money, though, is going to Santa Clara County, not to us. So as we incur these, we aren't able to get any of that back, there's really nothing they're doing that we can find them for.
Um, that's right, I mean, there was some fines imposed as a result of the illegal grading that occurred.
Mm-hmm, oh, yeah, the, the-
Uh, but, but yeah, this is not, this is not money the city can directly take back, it, it is more savings to your residents' health and environmental quality that you are investing in.
Yeah, so, so my comment, you know, for, for the, the council, my comment is, you know, this is an important issue, we can't let it go unchecked, and then, you know, the residents just have to learn to live with it. We need to do what we have to do, um, for our communities, uh, you know, and the residents. And, yeah, it's, it's not a, a, a small amount, but if, if it wasn't this, and it was, um, due to earthquakes, or, or, um, you know, hurricanes or something else, we'd be needing to do what we need to do for the community, and it just so happens, we don't have hurricanes, but we do have Lehigh, so.
I, I like the analogy.
Wow, that's, I've never heard that analogy, but, yeah, I like that.
Don't get yourself wrapped around the axle.
I still, uh, so I'm trying to understand, if we go for EIMs, or we, we will make comments, but like, a lot of people make comments to an EIR, you may or may not get any kind of mitigation, they may still ignore you, and unless we sue, which we may or may not be able to do, we may get nothing out of four hundred thousand dollars.
That's possible.
Right? Just want to understand that.
That's possible if they completely ignore everything we say and all our experts say.
But they can do that, right?
They, they could do that, and, and there would likely be significant litigation risk to them to do that.
But then to go to litigation for us, that mean maybe another million dollars to do it?
Yeah, this, this does not include litigation costs. And, and I will say that, um, I don't wanna sound like I'm threatening to sue the county, we've been working quite well with them, and I don't know if, um, I should probably, Roger, or the, if your director of public works would like to have anything additional to add here, um, because he's been a little bit more in the trenches than I have been.
I, I know that, it's, it's my goal to continue that collaborative effort that we've enjoyed with the county, I think we've been steering them in good directions, but it, it's been very helpful to have Heather's firm, um, give us that technical advice at the right time, to keep them going in the right direction, I, I, and I would expect that to continue, um, but it, it is nice to have this support, and, um, there are some very large things that are happening at both of the sites. If you recall, they're, they're wanting to, to not use the, uh, the east side storage material, material yard to, to fill in the existing pit, they wanna have contractors bring in earth, and that was like six hundred trucks a day, so there's, there's really some significant things that we wanna make sure that we're, we really document and are prepared for in the future.
Yeah, but, I mean, six hundred thousand is a steep amount, when we are unsure what it will provide, right? So, for Lehigh, I think, what I really want to explore is, is there any possibility for this county to rezone the site for residential, given that the land price here is so high? There might be a very good incentive if we can, as part of the study, explore, this is a very good option for you to consider, and we won't fight you anymore.
Yeah, and that might come up as part of the alter- comments on the alternatives in the EIR.
So we can make that comment, maybe do some land value evaluation?
Something we could look at, yeah.
Okay, because I want to have some viable option that give them a way out.
Yeah, it, it is private land, so, um, you know, it's up to the property owner, to a large extent, what occurs there, but, um-
Mm-hmm, okay.
Okay, so we ready for a motion here?
Hey, one last comment.
Oh.
It's not an idiom, but, you know, I think, without a doubt, had we not- It's not an idiom, but, you know, I think without a doubt, had we not done what we've already done, thanks to Heather, shutting down that truck traffic on the roads, that is clearly, you know, impacting our community, to me, just, you know, it lets, lets the residents know, we are doing what we can do. We, we can't just shut down because of, you know, this amount of money. We need to, to keep, keep the pressure on. And it is sending a message to Lehigh that Cupertino is a force to be reckoned with. And the best, the best defense is a good offense, and that's what we're trying to do here. It's not an idiom, I don't think.
It is.
It's a reality.
It's self-explanatory.
Yeah, and so, you know, I do think we need to keep this in perspective, that if we didn't have some, some successes and we were just kind of swimming, then I'd agree that we should rethink this. But I do think we've made good progress at a cost, but it's the right thing to do for the community.
Okay, now, because we took so long, I have one speaker card. Welcome, Jennifer.
I took my nap, so now I'm ready to talk.
I took mine, too.
You know, I just love that thing about, we don't have hurricanes, but we've got Lehigh. How about we can throw in, we also have Valco, and we also have housing bill land. You know, back in about, oh, God, when was it? About maybe nineteen ninety-nine, two thousand and one, some, there was a plan, a bizarre plan in the county, that somebody was going to go in there and actually, like, build a whole new city up there at where the permanent property was. I mean, I knew, I had heard things, rumors about that, because we were lurking around in the county at the time, we were trying to get out of it and go somewhere, my neighborhood. And then, the whole thing came out and it was like, you've got to be kidding. But I'm just going to say right now, where we're going, I mean, this is twenty years later, there are people in Sacramento, who will remain nameless, who would love to rezone the quarry for affordable housing, for not doing EIRs. We're going to build ten-story buildings up in the middle of the Lehigh Quarry because we can. This is why we have Heather's and we have, we, we have, these are things, I mean, other cities, like in the south, they're saddled with hurricanes, or the Midwest, or hurricanes, snowstorms, et cetera. We have environmental causes because we live in California and we happen to have a lot of mountains and we have a lot of coastline. We have to protect against people abusing and taking advantage of sensitive environmental areas, and that's why our city has to spend the money. Other cities don't have to, because they're not adjacent to sensitive environmental areas, or maybe they just don't care. But the part I really, really like about Cupertino is that we care. We care deeply. We're willing to take the sacrifices to do the right thing. And I will say, I'm going to say that to Sacramento, we care, we do the right thing in everything we do. So, I am, you know, we have taken on, we have been burdened with a lot of stuff in the last three years, and nobody can get our little city down. In my mind, we are every, we are the little engine that could, and we are the heart and soul of California. Thank you.
Wow, thank you, Jennifer. That was, that was good. Okay, and thank you, Roger.
I'd like to move that the city council won't accept the city manager's first quarter financial report for fiscal year two thousand nineteen, twenty. Two, adopt resolution number nineteen dash one-three-nine approving the first quarter budget adjustments as described. Number three, adopt resolution number nineteen dash one-fourty, amending the compensation program for the unrepresented, who are the management and confidential employees. And that's my motion.
I second.
Vote.
The motion carries with council member Stinks absent.
Okay, so we are on to council and staff comments and future agenda items. John, would you like to go first?
So, what I would like to have said earlier when we had residents here, but this is mainly, you know, for us, because I'll make a reason for that. So, this past couple of weeks, meeting with residents, and specifically two high school, two Cupertino High High School students gave a, a presentation of their project that they did, and it's about what their age group, students at Cupertino High, think is right for the Valco site. Came out really well with great, great ideas for that. I won't go into those, because that's, I think, something they should present. They said that they'd be, you know, interested in coming and speaking to the council, because I said, hey, what you've done is great. You've done a survey, well-thought-out, you've got input, and it has some great input from an important part of our community, the younger population. With that being said, I'd like to suggest that we have either a study session or an agenda item where they can come and do their probably ten-minute presentation, and then we can discuss not only these interesting aspects that they've come up with, but that they go way beyond, you know, Valco. It's for the future growth of our community and an important demographic. What, what does this demographic feel is needed, that they support? You know, there's the Oaks, there's United Furniture, there's Scandinavian Design. It's going to keep coming back, and here's an opportunity for us to, to find out what they've done and then maybe build on it. I mean, we're working on a housing survey that I want to get out as soon as we can, but it should actually go beyond that. So, I put that out as a request for either a, a agenda item or a study session, and that they would come and give their presentation, and we can take the ball from there.
So, I missed that, from which school?
Cupertino High School. There's two seniors. In fact, I meant to mention their names, Arabi and Haratha. And they're both seniors, and they, they've done a, a wonderful project, so.
So, they can just present their project?
Well, they could, but then we don't have a chance to discuss it and decide what we would then consider in terms of building on what they've done. I don't see it as being something that, boom, it's done, it's water under the bridge and going to be forgotten. I think we should be continuing that type of effort so that we know what, what should the growth in our community look like.
But if they present, like today, the live, and the oncology present, we can still discuss, then you can decide.
I, I don't know. When they come and talk at the podium, you know, the mayor says, no, can't ask questions, can't have our discussion, you know? And so, making it an agenda item.
Right. If it's a presentation instead of, you know, oral communication, then you, then you can ask questions if you wish.
Because it's agendized.
So, yeah, we can, sure. I mean, we need to find a meeting where it will fit. I mean, that's always our struggle at our agenda-setting meetings. We look at the time, the meeting will end, this meeting should have ended about an hour and a half ago.
Why?
And so, yeah, we can, we can try to fit this in.
Yeah, I actually got another request. A group wants to present their project idea on Memorial Park. I don't know if it's.
This one, I think, is really important in the sense that it is an important component, you know, the growth of our community and what does the community see as, you know, the, the things they do support. So, so if you wanted to see the presentation with them and then we bring it to an agenda, I, and they'd be happy to come and, and I was in the conference room there and it was fine, you know, they could come and you could see and then decide how to proceed forward such that we and the community benefit.
Okay. I, I just that we can't, I mean, I get these all the time, too, and I never want to turn down students. But we do need to be careful of time. We can't, they can't come and have an hour. That's, you know.
Yeah.
They can have ten minutes, but not an hour.
So, I put the request out and.
And how long would this be?
Their presentation, ten minutes, and then our discussion.
Right. Yeah, so ten minutes.
But our discussion, another ten.
Do they need ten minutes to present? Usually, a presentation is about five minutes, right?
Okay, well, we can work that out, but sure.
It's not a rush, you know.
Right, sure, just to move this along now, I'll support you and we can put it on the agenda.
Great.
So, we have two people.
Great.
Okay.
Second topic, you know, Apple gave, has put out a two-point-five-billion-dollar amount for housing, and I talked to Rod Deirdren about that this past week. It's a million dollars for new home, new home buyers, doesn't really help us. A million dollars for state.
Talking about million or billion?
Billion.
Okay. You keep saying million.
Oh, sorry. So, two-point-five billion, one billion, and now the next billion state cooperative housing projects then. Hundred and fifty million, which is the one that speaks to me, I could go into the other ones, but I won't, which is Bay Area Affordable Housing. That's out there, you know, that they're willing to, to use, a hundred and fifty million dollars for Bay Area housing projects. Of course, he'd like them as far along as possible in terms of seeing that, you know, it's ready, close to being ready to, to start, but still, how we can take advantage of that. At the same time, I also talked to councilman, previous councilman, Orin Mahoney, who brought up that the land on Mary.
Right.
Was already looked at by previous council and was turned down at that point in time. But if, if there is this type of money and we do have those types of places, I think we really should have an agenda item, have a study session, and determine where.
I completely agree with you. We should have a study session on this. This is a very significant allocation. We should invite Apple to make a presentation.
Right, and that project is the exact one that's far enough along that, and it's got the optics, too. I mean, this is supposed to be for developmentally disabled adults, so that, and affordable, extremely low income. So, yeah, yeah, you don't have to go any further. I agree, we should do that. Put it on the agenda.
Well, I'll put one last sentence on that one, then I'll go to the other stuff. And that, the last sentence is, though, I truly believe this should have been at the beginning so that the residents could hear, so that the community can hear. We are for housing and we missed that opportunity. We're, we're talking with only two.
Right, you know.
And so, I'd like to ask the mayor, that when you say, you know, your committee assignments, I, I truly believe that the residents are as much of an important topic, and we need to police ourself and not get into topics that shouldn't be done then. But if it's something that it's for the community to hear and understand, I think it needs to be done at that time. That was the whole point of moving the report outs to the beginning of the meeting as opposed to doing it now with nobody here to hear it. So, I, I'm requesting that you open that. If you notice, I always try to be very succinct and make that, you know, time very short and to miss out, you know, in, in being able to, to show the community what we are trying to do. So, now, on to the things for this point in time when nobody's here. I attended the Ding Ding tenth, Ding Ding TV tenth year anniversary, well-attended. It's nice. Their, their purpose is to bridge the technology of Silicon Valley with Asia. And the fact that they were willing to do that here in Cupertino, their ten-year anniversary, wow, that was, you know, great. Their office is in Santa Clara, but they chose to do it here. And, you know, I think we, we really need to, to take a note that we can have those types of things. And then, there's the Veterans Day Ceremony at Memorial Park. I think it deserves, you know, a, a statement that, you know, we, I believe we need to really be honoring the veterans that have fought World War I, World War II, Vietnam War, Iran, Iraq, all these places, and keep those, those memories going. And so.
I mentioned that we were all there.
Yes, and we were all there, yes. All five of us were there in, in the stands. I'll let the other councilmen elaborate, but, great.
Okay, before you go, Darcy, we struggle with where to put things on the agenda all the time.
Yep.
And the agenda items, which are, I think, the most important, because those are scheduled, people know about them, we decided to put them before the stuff that's not agendized. And then, we moved the committee assignments forward, because we thought they were important, more important than the council and staff comments. And we can move things around, but everything you move up means something else moves later.
Right. And I think the, the city council process is kind of a living process that gets changed. Now, I would toss out, like I say, I try to be very succinct. If I don't have something of true significance, boy, Darcy, it's your turn, go, go right ahead. I could say a more reasonable approach is, you know, two minutes. If you have something that's important.
All right. Yeah, I think that's good. If we did time limits on that, then that's fine.
And I'll just say that we, we have had past agenda items about order of business, and we recently approved a resolution. If you want to rethink that, we can bring it back.
Okay, yeah, we don't have to do that right now.
But I think we don't need to have the discussion.
Okay, let's go, let Darcy go.
I think what John is proposing is only the adding, only proposing new agenda item. That's important for the public to know, right?
Okay.
So, that part can be moved to.
Yeah, I'm willing to do that, but it has to be time-limited. People have to be, you know.
And again, we're not making decisions here about the order of business.
Right, I just, we have a big problem up here that we are never succinct. We go on and on and on, and it's not necessary. So, Darcy, your turn, be succinct.
I'm always succinct. So, I, I, I think we should just exercise some discipline with regard to our processes. And, you know, personally, I like having this at the end, because of the fact that you can kind of, kind of take all the elements of the meeting and, and, you know, if, if your mind can, you know, make it here, you can, you can start talking about it at the end. There was an item that council member Willie and I talked about between the last meeting and, and now, and I think we both support it. It's very in keeping with his priorities of answering to the public. When we have these agenda items, a lot of the times, we get emails. It may come to some subset of council, it may come to all of council. There's no guarantee that staff, and, and particularly the relevant staff working on the item, gets it. And so, I, I'd like to propose that we think of some kind of resolution or policy of forwarding all emails relating to an item in the week, at least the week prior to council meetings to staff, along with the requirement that staff be prepared to speak to the concerns raised by the public, you know, during that agenda item. And so, I think that's a pretty significant thing. So, for instance, if there's a development item there, what I'm asking is, you know, pick a time, a week before to, you know, the meeting. There should be a process for forwarding that email inquiry information over to either the city manager or an admin, who would then send it to the relevant staff person, so that the public can really feel when they're getting their emails in there, that their concerns are being addressed by, by our city employees, especially when it's an agendized item. So, I, I'd like to see whether we can explore that. I'm not, you know, advocating to say we definitely should. I'm not, you know, advocating, uh, to say we definitely should, but, um, I'd like to see if we can get some support for, you know, looking into perhaps a resolution that would, you know.
If an email goes to city council and does not have the city manager on it, Lauren is able to, she, what she does automatically forwards it to me and the relevant, uh, department directors.
Right, so if that's the case, and it happens all the time with regularity and consistency, then my request would be that the pertinent staff for an agenda item be ready to speak to, um, you know, each and every one of the residential concerns, uh, leading up to the meeting from a, from a time certain prior to. Probably when the agenda comes out, I think is probably the best time to identify, like on Thursday or Wednesday.
Wait, are you saying that they address every email in the council meeting?
I would ask that they be prepared to do, to, to answer that if there are follow-up questions. Um, but I think they could use their discretion, you know, if there's a hundred emails, no, you don't have to talk about a hundred different topics, but, I mean, there are going to be strands that probably go into major buckets and, you know, just, just as, as part of preparation.
And you know how some of the emails are.
That might be very time consuming though.
You know, I, I'm not going to be, you know, kind of like, you know, exacting about it.
I will say that, that I do that and I often talk to department heads to be prepared that they, they may be getting questions about that and should think about issues. So I think a lot of that is going on already when we do our own agenda review.
To a degree, but I don't think it's.
In fact, I don't even know Lauren will forward email to Deb. And I sometimes forward to them.
So I usually get them three or four times, that's okay.
And, and, and I don't even know department heads will also get them, I don't actually know.
That's my job.
Do they, do they always get it?
We send them to the relevant department.
Because I've always wondered.
No, 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 I, I think we can set policy expectations and basically say, look, you know, as a general matter, we would like staff to be prepared to answer to residential concerns that arrive at us through email. So that's my.
And I don't have, I think we can easily do that thematically, as you said, kind of in buckets or themes. If there's like, usually development projects get a lot of emails. They're usually thematic, so we can kind of address them in groupings.
And, and like I say, you, you know, you, you have variable, you know, quality of service across the board. I mean, as with any institution, but, I mean, whatever it takes to make it such that you can point to some kind of policy or perhaps a resolution and say, hey, look, this is something that we've been asked by council to do, uh, you know, as, as our general practice. Second item, um.
But, I mean, sorry, one more comment is, uh, yeah, I, it's news to me, it will be automatically forwarded to department head. But then I would also like to know which.
As a matter of, uh.
Let Darcy finish and then you have a turn.
Yeah, no, frankly, it's, um, you know, discussion, but I, I'd just like to get through my comments. Um, so with regard to, um, some of the oral communication follow-ups, um, there was the, uh, person with concerns with regard to, uh, you know, health-related issues in grocery stores and, uh, I, I'd like to ask to see whether the city, city attorney could follow up and, you know, let people know in addition to the county health department, who they, what they can reference in perhaps our uh, city code, uh, that would, um, allow us to invoke our code enforcement options if we have any of those. I, I mean, usually there's some kind of health and safety provisions, so I'd like to see if those are possible. Um, Shiv Shaw, who spoke on oral communications regarding biking on Tantao. Um, I think that, uh, is good that Roger, uh, as Public Works Director, was there to follow up and talk to him directly, but I think it would also be good to reach out to the Apple representative who's been working on, you know, uh, bike paths to see whether, you know, they can, um, weigh in on it and perhaps, uh, help out with some. I, I mean, there's some pretty significant structural requests that the speaker was making, but I think that could be useful. Pamela Hershey, uh, in addition to the status of monitoring, uh, the air, which I thought was really great answer regarding Bay Area Air Quality Management District, so kudos to, um, city attorney and city manager for pointing that out. She was also asking for reassurance regarding the demolition of the Sears Auto Center and the clarification of its toxicity, um, you know, status, and so, you know, I'd like to see, um, I'd like to request follow-up with regard to that. Um, the final item, uh, is on November eighth, on Friday, uh, we had a really good, uh, city council, city manager workshop, so I'd like to thank, um, Deb for arranging that. I've been through at least three of them, and I think this one was, um, really high-quality discussion and we got some, you know, really good, uh, items and, you know, suggestions for processes, uh, covered. So, that's it, thanks. Oh, I'm sorry, I, 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 I have one more thing. Tomorrow, I have a town hall happening at six thirty at Community Hall right here. Um, from five thirty to six thirty, I'll be hosting a roundtable over in, uh, City Hall for the first ten people who respond. Uh, just email Lauren Sapooter, Lauren S at Cupertino dot org. I think there are a few spots still available, uh, for the roundtable. It's from five thirty to six thirty, uh, over at City Hall prior to, uh, the town hall that, that Deb and I will, uh, be here for and, uh, perhaps some other members of staff, so thanks very much.
Okay, Vice Mayor, your turn.
Sorry, the town hall, five to six, you have, uh.
Five thirty to six thirty, I have a, I have a roundtable for, um.
So people can sign up to speak?
They can sign up to have a discussion in one of our conference rooms over at City Hall. So it's, it's limited ten because of the nature of the conversation. So that's from five thirty to six thirty, it's just kind of an added feature.
Because someone texted me that they, they want to talk about it in the town hall. I, I thought, are you talking about the city council meeting? Maybe they are referring to your town hall because I don't know, I didn't know about it. They want to, to talk about the Memorial Park, uh, high school students have some idea how to improve that. So I should ask them to contact you then, right?
I, I'm not, I'm not privy to your email communication, so I don't really.
I mean, is that what people can sign up to talk about for some ideas for Memorial Park? Is that appropriate for that town hall?
Okay, well, let me, let me just kind of, kind of clarify the parameters. So the town hall is a regular town hall, it'll take place here in Community Hall from six thirty to eight thirty.
Yeah.
So Deb and I will basically be having a town hall type of exchange with members of the public who decide to come. No RSVP required. I've decided to add a feature to, uh, the town hall an hour beforehand, basically to say that anyone who wants to speak in a roundtable format, uh, with me, I, I'm not asking Deb to be there, but of course, you're welcome to be there if you'd like to, you know, spend that extra hour. Um, that if they RSVP to, uh, Lauren, Lauren S at Cupertino dot org, that the first ten people to RSVP will have that opportunity just to sit down in a conference table style setting for an hour and just talk about free-form issues.
Oh, I see, so that's not appropriate, okay. So I guess follow up on what your request was, uh, anything emailed sent to the city council, Lauren will, now I learned, uh, just learned it will be forwarded to the, to Deb and appropriate department head. However, I didn't know that before and I don't know which department had actually got, get it. So for me, I always wondered, does the staff get it or not?
Depends on the subject matter. If it's a, if it's a planning thing, I send it to planning, if it's a question about, uh, development, I send it to them. If it's something public works, I send it to them.
Because usually, unless I forward, they don't really respond, so how do I know if they, how do I know who actually got this feedback? Um, there, there is no way to really know, right?
I think to clarify, if someone just sends an email to you, Vice Mayor Chow, I don't think Lauren is actually forwarding you the email.
It's just the ones of all the city council.
Yeah, I know, when the, when sent to the old city council, I still am not sure who, who, which department head will get it, right? Because some issues are not clearly in one department, so we don't know, right?
But then I'll take them.
Okay.
Yeah, they, she affords them all to me and the appropriate heads.
Okay, so in terms of agenda item, I think Lisa mentioned, uh, the issue about the type of trees, how close they are to the fence and, or, or house and, uh, the balcony, some really big balcony. And Ray proposed to choose, uh, for planning commission to maybe take a look.
So there've been a lot of, there've been a lot of community code change suggestions or ordinance changes. So we are bucketing those on dates to be determined and maybe it becomes, um, something we discuss as part of the next year's work program.
Mm-hmm, okay. So we don't need a separate agenda item for this, right? This will be.
We'll bring it.
Included, okay, yeah. So then in terms of activities, on the twelfth of November, I attended the San Taklera County Consolidated Regional Forum. It's something new to me, turns out they are talking about how to allocate the federal dollar, which is for the uh, GDBTQ is what's that name? The community, the grant from the Community Development Department. The one we always allo, CDPT, yeah. C, some, yeah, the one we allocate to help, uh, usually for affordable housing and social services. So they, this is a plan that they do every five years to talk about the priorities for the county and the city. And then on the tenth, and so I would like to see how we can help them and also other nonprofit in Cupertino, not only finding space, but also maybe they can help us to provide workshops to nonprofits to help them to figure out how best to grow. And then on the sixteenth, I attended a U-Channel TV gala, it's their fifth, fifth anniversary. It's similar to Ding Ding TV and they are run by, uh, Riv, River of Life Church. It's a Christian church, but then they do have a lot of TV show about all kinds of um, things happening in the community. Hmm, but mostly Chinese though, yeah. Um, on the nineteenth, they also, we have, I think that's all, yeah, okay.
Okay, so everyone has gone over almost everything that I, we've done, so I won't go over that again. Um, I did receive an email from a group of students that they, they want to present, uh, they, we designed a solution where selenium can be filtered out from down-filled water using biofilm reactor and purified water. This is related to the Lehigh Hansen Quarry and their toxic waste. So I thought, yeah, this sounded like a great project and I go, wow, these are great high school students that did this, except they're fifth graders. So I think like only in our area do fifth graders come up with something like this, very impressive. Um, I echo Councilman Paul's issue about, um, what Pamela Hershey spoke about, uh, especially with the gas station, we don't really know what's under that parking lot. Um, probably they never took out the underground tanks when they removed the gas station. Yeah, we, we just don't know, that's something that we really need to be on top of. Um, and then the last thing, on December fifteenth last Friday, I visited a second grade class, um, in San Francisco, they want, they're learning about government. Um, I had some great questions. One student asked if I had a bodyguard. Another one asked if the city provided me with a limousine. And I said, no, I just get a Clipper card. And we had a little mock council meeting and the students have decided that it's not a good idea for a developer to build luxury condominiums on top of their playground. They thought it was a very, uh, bad idea, even though I pointed out that they should just be doing more homework and not playing. They did not, uh, appreciate that. I'm sorry, November, everything I have is December, sorry. Yeah, November fifteenth. Um, so that was very fun, the kids had a great time and so did I. And I think that's all I have, so if no one else has anything else.
I have, I just have a couple of things.
Oh, sorry, okay, oh, well.
Um, the one thing is I met with a group of students a couple of weeks ago. They came in to give me a presentation on a three-D printing project that they put together for emergency stairs that you can, that are portable, that you can use as a ramp or turn it into stairs. It's really an interesting concept.
And these were second graders or what?
Middle school, they're a little older, seventh and eighth graders. Um, and then, uh, at last week's Santa Clara County City Managers Association meeting, I became the vice chair for 2020.
Ooh, wow.
Yeah.
Okay. Have it, oh.
One more item about the Silicon Valley Community Services. I think John requested, uh, to consider maybe additional funding for them.
You're talking about West Valley Community Services? Right, we, we couldn't get it on this agenda because we have to do, um, we have, need the finance department to investigate, you know, exactly how to do this and open it to other nonprofits as well.
So we are going to still consider?
It is on the agenda for December third.
Right.
That's too late for Thanksgiving, right?
No, but it's not too late for Christmas.
Okay, but I don't, but I think they, he sent an email, he really needs something for January, a campaign he's starting.
Right, yeah, I talked to Josh and there's really, I mean, I had the impression they were in some kind of an emergency funding, but he said, no, no, they're not. And we really need to be careful about abandoning our process for deciding which nonprofits to give money to and just going off, um, like this.
And, and it, and it will be on the next.
And it is on the next agenda, so don't worry. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think they gave a pretty good presentation tonight where they said their need has increased. And this is what Josh told me on the, uh.
It'll be for discussion on the next agenda.
Right, it'll be on the next agenda.
So that, I think, sets the stage that there is the need there. Let's discuss it, see who will support it.
Okay, very good. Okay, I had predicted twelve thirty and it's one ten, so I think I got the prize.